Okay, substitutions. Do we have any?
I understand. We can make substitutions at any moment.
Okay, any declarations of interest?
And again, the chairman again comes up during discussions this meeting if you move alertly in that point. Can we make that so?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, and do we have any requests by a member of the public to address the planning?
I agree with the chairman.
Thank you very much. I took five then, minutes for special meeting held on the 25th of July.
The chairman, any other comments about the 10th of July council? I think he's a little tired on the 25th of July side.
Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on then, the planning applications, the main point of the evening, planning applications at 98 Church Street. This has been running on for some time now.
Mr. Chairman, I thought that some tickets were just on my nerve copy, not there as well. It's amended far, which is amended, 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 I understand. This is the final one, according to my note to present date. And it has been amended dramatically. I don't think we've had concerns with this.
Okay. Right, do we have any comments on 98?
Some of the residents of the, just as you're going up Inkins Lane, I follow one because it's back 13 hours, some of them there was a bit concerned that the access to the back way of the road comes in, you get on it and everything, it looks like, you know, in the future that could be extended through and just worried about losing the rest of the park that they live around it and that's what you're going to do.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for that.
That's me.
Tom?
You'll have to excuse my voice.
Yeah.
I know you have a lot of people. She said that many grounds, because we're not exactly in plans, and they are done. We are desperate in the first place because of the fact that we've taken part of the creation of that. That is, nothing but, and I think that, to be honest, the only real difference, there's very little difference in the actual concern from the houses themselves. My only thought is, take it from the planning thing, what may happen in the future, I don't think too important to decide now. I'm talking about the excess, the rest of that, and I'm not sure we can say anything about that. And that's my main concern about, following that, the actual development.
This is chairman.
I don't see that there is such a change in development. It's only been on the basis of people who've taken it. I'm still very disappointed that we haven't talked about the development next door. And all I can do is say that I'm very disappointed about what we're doing with that application.
I'm very disappointed that we haven't managed to get the land adjacent, but, you know, you can't force someone to sell, and so that is disappointing.
Okay, thank you for that. How then, look up John.
I'm pleased, it's just on the ground side, it's not, it's heading to the bar, that way. And also, I like the height because it's the same level as the building backing on to them. To me, I don't see no problems on that area. It's a shame that that has not been built, that concrete bit on the other side as well. But to me, it seems all right, just on that little bit, that's it.
Thank you, Anne. John?
Thank you, Chair. I think I've argued against this before, although the board was in the planning, it was the build itself, always remember that cop, all those parts of the field, all the way of the car park and the four borders. It is my personal view that to one day, we wish to sit near our own, mark the building on the fault, which is. In my view, there's no more than a foothold to get onto that park. There's nowhere I recommend this council support this in any way whatsoever. There also must point out, we'll talk about this tenement before, or should we remember another one before, there's a nice, a nice week called Best Cross, that'd be straight on to the park. It's a road that never had a concrete in many years ago. I repeat, there's nowhere, I see it's a foothold that in practical, we will be sitting here fighting over it on this whole field. Sorry, there's nowhere I can recommend it, but this chamber, anyway, shape or form, go ahead with this. Unfortunately, I know they don't vote involved, but I do have any words, and I thank you for it.
Okay, thank you, John. I hear what you're saying, but when it comes out, we can't make decisions on what's going to happen in the future, only books we have in front of us at the present moment. So, thank you, but some comments are noted, though, thank you. David?
As I said, I'm good with the three ones, though. We can only discuss plans at these times. We cannot discuss what may happen in 20 years' time, 10 years' time for that development. You can only judge on that whether the plan itself, as it stands, is acceptable. And whilst I might appreciate, I think you have some interference that you suggested there, that is not a grounds for us to object to.
Okay, one more comment. Yep, can you say it?
Just one more comment. Just remind you, what one does today, the reflections on the future, always remember that, it never stops now, the future always happens, and in my view, it will keep on happening. Thank you.
The chairman is disappointed, goes into the committee that you're looking at the planning, but to me, it's not that specific plan, to be like the planning application, you're looking at the planning grant, get out of your comments, and kind of remind members that voting is open to members of the committee and substitute members as well.
Okay. Okay, aren't there any further comments on this planning application that we have here in front of us? Okay, then, so in summary, that the plans are all ready for changes, as I can see, and then this is the committee can see, there are concerns of some of the residents of what might happen in the future, but again, those points are noted, but we can't, we can't make judgments of what might happen in the future. Obviously, we're disappointed about the adjacent properties not being, not being procured to include within this development. And that's, is that a general fair summary of what's going to happen?
It's not much yet.
Okay. Okay, then. Yep, so without more ado, any, for all those in favour of the planning application? Okay, any against? Okay. Thank you, then to Karen.
Yeah, well, we've talked to Brock, our friends, and then to my idea, you support this application.
Yeah, obviously, we did a few comments that we have made about the relevant points. Okay, then, thank you very much for that, then. We're moving on to item seven then, planning, neighbourhood planning. This has been rumbling for quite some time, it will rumble for quite a while yet.
As the chairman, can I say that I attended the neighbourhood planning workshop, that I hope to bring you up for a report on this, but I have not yet got the information from Brock, your friends, or from me to bring my report with what happened. They are waiting for the comments coming from the individual who actually ran the workshop. I can't do anything to tie it all together. It depends what happened, there were a number of members attending with me, we looked at what neighbourhood planning was, we asked for a lot more information. I've since found out that as regards to applying for grants, you do definitely, if I thought needed a full business plan, you need to have your, your working group, party committee, where you've got the public, general planning committee in place, decide what issue actually are looking at for the neighbourhood plan, and allocate your groups for you to apply for the money. So you could put the financial outcome before you actually start. With regard to a lack of consultation, we can't do anything there until Brock's work comes back to me, and I understand that won't be till, until the end of March or Prater is due to come into play at the end of March, because that's something else we discussed and it's unlikely that anything will happen until the new administration, which is probably a good idea, given that they will be people allocated and applied as. I also went to that association meeting in Holland, and I actually have a lot more information that's in regard to neighbourhood planning, something also that parts are looking at, and I'm bringing it forward, and bringing what's happening in other towns and parishes. I can tell you, several are very far down the road at the moment, and we have asked the suburbs brought in consultants to do the work, and I can advise that your management gets approved unless you've got consultants tied in it up, because you're unlikely to trust anyone on your management committees who has planning training, and you will need a consultant to draw it up and bring it to the required status, so. Though these are items that we've discussed, probably in terms of time, when we see what we're doing, and it seems you need to have your management committee in place, you need to have your working group in place, and you need to know exactly what you are looking for when it comes to a neighbourhood plan, so what's a working group? And the big D word was being read out at all times, and by the D word, I mean volunteers. They are looking at volunteers, they found that several, more than 200 people attended the initial meeting, and it ended up with 20. Most people show an interesting beginning of these projects, but through work commitments, through family commitments, whatever, through lack of expertise, or because it's not looking at issues that they're indeed themselves are interested in, you're not responsible, and that's just how things work, but I won't be bringing this to a later.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't bring you more, but I do want to have people in the room, and it would be stupid of me to bring something happy.
Okay, well, will you likely to have the information by the 20th of March, when our planning meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you for that. So, David?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I attended this particular planning of the neighbourhood plan, and obviously, Dan Clark and others were there. I will say to you first of all, that when we, well, questions were asked, first of all, it seemed to me that the day had been set up to actually, and plans and information, which we did receive, which wasn't that much, actually came from bigger places within the country, towns and cities. I think they're trying to scale this, Brock, though, to make it part of a neighbourhood plan. Obviously, more questions were asked, there's a lot of questions that weren't answered, there's a lot more questions and answers, vice versa, to come. I would state, though, that I'm not here to knock the neighbourhood plan on the head, no way. Brock, who were in the way clearly at the meeting, that they would look, like start shifting things at the end of March. Well, we actually told them there and then that we didn't think it was a good idea, because it's right on the electoral time, there's lots more to be done, new administration's going to be coming in after a few weeks after that, so they knew exactly what we were talking about. Thirdly, I think that the big calendar, that you put all the questions in just for all these three holes, I believe, Chair, that at this time, I will propose, and not to verify, I would propose, that in fact, this is, more information, more information's got to be gathered, I suggest that this goes forward to the next administration, May or June. As Dan Clark said, there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of committees to set up, it's a bigger thing than you actually anticipate, and so that's what I suggest we do.
The chairman, before we can do anything, we need to get this out of Brock's borough council, and then we need to go to consultation. I can tell you that there is another parish in the borough which has come into consultation, they sent out a number of thousands of letters that were sent out, they got 60,000 back, 60 of the 60 applying, 60 of the local people were 60, and Clark's very concerned that they don't have a mandate, and looking into that at the moment, and that's something else you have to think about, you may want to go down this road, you may want to go forward, but if you don't actually get feedback, you then sit down and say, oh, what are we going to do with this, and are we covered? It's not just people that are going to say it, because while a town or parish are obliged to run this, whether it's a town or parish, it is not just the town or parish, it is members of the town council, plus other interested individuals, so you only, for example, in some, the civic society there, so they had a big input, and you have businesses, you have a lot of other industries who need to be advised to take part, so see, this will keep coming back to you, and it will come to the next administration.
Okay, thank you for that. Dave?
Yeah, I also write on this cause, and I'm just, someone I write very, very dismally, after what I've already said, as Brock's one even proved out, area gap, then it's a bloody point, it's a very, very big decision. My impression overall was, there's far too many questions that were answered. As council group also said, most of it was about larger areas, apart from one area, they highlighted, it was absurd, which is that people who did eighty bodies only, that was one of the things.
Yes.
Seventy thousand a week, yeah.
I felt overall, there was not sufficient things, and I changed the impression that basically the whole thing was organised, that Brock was trying to tell us how wonderful the neighbourhood plan was, so we could do the work for it. I was not impressed by this, it was quite a little bit of qualification. I was not convinced that it was actually going anywhere sensible, apart from that, any name of a plan has got to be proved by Brock, so it's in their goal strategy, so mine wasn't done before, I know. So ultimately, I'm really not a cynic, going down the wing or anywhere, and I'm going to have to see what happens. The amount of work and cost involved, I feel this very good counterproductive to what this council could afford, even a dime of what we might budget, but I can say, but I think even from talking to all the councils, all the boroughs, all the areas in the borough, the general feeling is, there is no point actually going anywhere of any great detail until we have a new administration. We're not going to get information, and it's pointless as waiting our time and our money doing anything until a new administration. That's just my overall feeling, so thank you for that.
John, sorry?
Yes, there was quite a few at that meeting, and just as we didn't start that, so in 19, I did that here, and the impression I got, it was just settled to ease through the watch haters, of course, I feel, that's my personal impression of it, to ease it through, that to be accepted more and more, I'm going to accept it, anyway, shape or form, that is my personal impression of that meeting. All the way through, that was a thread from start to finish. Thank you.
Right, okay.
The chairman, you can, the thing about neighbourhood planning, you must agree with the local plan, you have to work with the local plan. Now, it simply is a paper, right, pros for it and against for it, as was everything. The idea behind it is probably a good idea, but it is looking at communities where people can all work together on a voluntary basis, and then bring in the professionals or whatever kind of pounds to draw it together, and that is what you have to do. Do you have the people that will do this and will make the commitment, because you've got to do it in three months, this is going to take you at least two years, I would say, to go this together. So it is a long, caring commitment, it's not just attending one or two meetings. Several are talking about having management committee conferences every month, plus the working groups meeting, that is a big commitment of anyone's time, and that's something that needs to be brought to people.
Okay, thank you very much, though. So, in summary then, we need more information from Brock, though, to make a informed decision, but more likely this will roll over to the new administration, that will happen in June. Are there any other questions?
Like, I can comment, really, basically, well, I listen very well, you also, about, it's, it's poor communication all the time, everywhere you go, we're not getting the information that we should be getting, it's sounds like all around you, and we're too often sort of concerned at the bottom.
Are you offering, Ray? Okay, then, fine, thank you very much.
I should go on entirely, your council to get some trouble, all we can, all I can do is report to you what is happening, but once I get the feedback, I will produce a report, it's not like I don't want to produce it, but I don't want to produce something happy that probably isn't going to happen, you will get it.
Okay, thank you very much, and I think that draws on, and maybe the plan moving on then to item eight?
This is the chairman, this is this wonderful item. Can I just say that at the last town council meeting, similar, I was asked to write to the council, I was the archer, I had contacted the county council, who said that was the first round of consultation, as I had told them before, who we didn't need, and they asked me to wait till the next round of consultation, and send it everything at the one time, because it's easier to do that way. I know councils were wearing our N C P hat, had been chasing it as well, so I will take any comments on the parking tonight and put them forward to the county council that told them that. This is actually very interesting, how difficult, yes.
Right, there's more? Yeah, Dave?
Firstly, we're coming to find sort of hits, and suggest we do them all, and I wanted to try to make comments, that what's agreed, that the town clerk was instructed to write, but she has now chosen not to. I would question what authority she has to decide not to follow what the instruction of the town council in writing, she was instructed to write particularly about people of late. Fine, she is all about, but that is what the town council instructed her to do. I would suggest that it's the town clerk's responsibility to do as instructed by the town council, and I would really like to know, on this occasion, making a phone call and not actually doing what is instructed by the town council.
As the chairman, as you remember, this time of town meeting, and the time the county council meeting came along, it was too late to actually comment in the consultation period and to send it out to people, and I spoke to the county council before we took it, who said, and informed the town council, we're looking at it, and he said, it's not a problem because it's, it's just the first round, and there would be further consultation. I contacted them again after the town council meeting, and they said, wait and send everything at the one time, this, I just came through at this point, rather than bits and pieces out of the consultation period, and I didn't, I knew the effect was going, because I was assuming, I said, I will contact them after this meeting, that's why I didn't, that's what I wanted.
With all due respect, these were available at our previous meeting, there is no alteration to the past, and I don't think the town clerks actually explained their reasoning for not following the instructions that was given by the town council. I'd like to progress to that, why she did not do what was instructed by the town council?
Because when I spoke, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to the county council, they said to send it as one, and I spoke with the leader of the county, they said, I'm sending it as one.
Okay, all right, we're going round the same, do we have, probably, thank you for that. Do we have any else? David?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, over the last few months, this situation regarding Old Street and everywhere else, has been, a lot of people smiling, a lot of emails, a lot of members walking around, people walking in the streets about this and that and the other. Now, I can remember back last June, July, well, actually, over the last three years, truthfully, we're trapped with transport, as I said, but, but we knew this would take a long time, we knew consultations would take a long time, we knew that the community had been around the streets, because I bumped into them, and we knew that eventually they were going to come back with their most vulnerable plan of all. When? One's got no idea. Secondly, there's another two consultations that come up through, there's people walking around certain streets in the county at the moment making notes, probably because they're checking if the lights are on, or if it's a parking worry, but at the end of the day, I think we're going to have to wait quite some time, Mr. Mayor, before any of this gets resolved, and that gets, it should stay on the agenda, but quicker it's offered the better, and let's go on, so that it is more.
Right, yeah, well, I can tell you that I went round with the county council on the 23rd of April, right, that's nine months, right, we got in the parking, what we're on, okay, the state of the roads, the orcs, we went all through, and virtually nothing has been done. The only, the only thing that has been done, literally, is a crossing at the Walkman Brook Road Street, right, that wasn't repaired before we painted the lines on it, it filled the whole mall with the thermoplastic paint, to, to make it good, that's what they did, which implies to me that somebody's made a claim, right, now, somebody's making claims, nothing really worth trying to know about it, there again, it's bad application, and there's certainly, I'm like, none of the, I gave the worst thing done, and the lining on Wellington Street that refers to, on Wellington Street, right, that's not even on their plan. And I did ask the actual officer whether all people that's been fined for parking on that line, or they were a real person, I'd like to know, because I don't think they are, but if it's not on their drawings, it should be able to book, flying people, that's been on there.
Can I suggest, in order to, we have gone on, so, we have your, well, talking about these very comments, can I suggest, in respect, that we take each one of the, or five, that we take them in order, make our comment, in order to then the town clerk can write what's requested in relation.
Okay, that's, that is a good, a good idea, any other, any other comments before we get on?
Just to say I'm chasing these, as frequently as I can, I get very negative responses. I was told the other day that the department is facing a 44% budget reduction, and the work, even as we promised, will not get done, and so petitions I handed in, and various areas that we lost to be looked at, I'm confident that this out here will be done, because this is an expectation to happen, but some of the others, I can tell you now, they're going to happen. A 44% reduction in the budget is massive, absolutely massive. We've seen the potholes fixed, we've seen them out in the last couple of days, but the improvements to the roads and the parking restrictions, and the lining of the schools that I've been looking at and working on and being consulted on, for start level, will be produced very, very dramatically, and I think it's a great shame, and I'm sure I can come through in the comments on each one, that hopefully you can incorporate that into the overall campaign. I'm contacting the people who work in our area daily, I send photographs, I send complaints virtually every single day, and that's all we have of it.
Thank you. Just to illustrate on the council about potholes, we could, my mistake, I was walking along, I think, Mr. Potholes.
Yeah, just a little bit to speak here, but now, there's just a bit of motion as the parking being there.
Okay, and then, let's, let's come back then with the, with the plans that you have in front of you, can we take Albert, Albert Avenue Derby Road, Bailey Street, Wellington Street, do you have the plans that you have in front of you, or on the wall, and they were standing there?
I think we have, obviously, I'm actually, yeah.
Yeah, I know you've been talking about this for probably the last two years, right, and the additional comments, and we don't worry about, apart from, please, the comments being.
They're simply going to take the yellow line out on Wellington Street, in front of the, for terrace houses that were built there, with no street parking, of course, you know, and that actual line was the entrance to the field, or the, or the land of the electoral contract that we're having before, perhaps, it wasn't, there was no need for it to be there in the first place, although, although it did have Mr. Musto from, explained that it was a passing place, which in Albert Street, it can't be.
Mr. Chairman, would you please that that line was going to come out, because that would be strange. You want that line out, you... You're supporting that, that part of the proposal?
Well, the four, the four complaints, if you like, or
Yeah, the objections, yeah.
Over, over as many years, including that, I mean, including all the road, they didn't want the parking. The thing is, with the car, is they don't want it.
We need constructive comments, can you give specific comments on this?
Could I see it, could I see it for the sake?
Do you want to borrow that one? Be specific, because that's your area.
Right, that's the one, they're supposed to be taking that, so it's a, a parking unit.
A specific comment, I was happy with that.
Quite happy with that. Although, although, on this one, what they've done, these four apartments have built on Bailey Street, okay? Which is part of, as you said, Bailey Street and Wellington Street, okay? They've taken two parking ways out. Now, I've had a, I've had a complaint from someone on Doggy Road. I can't remember the number now, on Doggy Road, they, they normally park. They've removed the parking ways out, but we've got seventy houses, seventy four now.
So you want the parking space to stay, it's not on your plan?
It's a bit of a, what? We've got seventy parking, uh, seventy houses on Wellington Street here. We've got thirty parking spaces. Now, you don't have to be Einstein, you don't have to think they park. We're on earth, do they think they park? We've got a massive problem here, you know, two, 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 two.
Do you have another suggestion?
Mr. Chairman, what you've got here is housing that was built before everyone had cars or motor vehicles. And this is a problem, it's a very problem throughout the country. In this part of the world where there are more cars, where there are spaces, what we need, you know, several comments, yes, so to speak.
So are you saying that you prefer those two parking spaces to be put back?
Put somewhere else, if you want, yeah, I don't want, you can't say you want somewhere else.
Okay.
Really, for people on dark
I hope that, I hope that would change.
Originally, we approved three houses with our street parking on that thing. What did they do? They built four. That's what I'm thinking, but why don't they listen to what we say? They're not listening to what we do, they're against communication.
So prefer more parking spaces to be put back, is that, that's what you say?
Well, it's, it's a bit difficult, really, to see the world, and you're giving point that
We need more parking in that area.
We cannot put a cure, the lock-in on the cure, the parking problem, unfortunately.
Okay, so that's, we're coming back to Al, right, okay, I've done, I think we've done about as much as we can on Wellington and Bailey Street. Well, on Albert, Albert Avenue.
That's where the one, from the lines at the back of where Warren Arndt used to do, that's brilliant. Because I know the shops along there have been asking for anything, and women of course for transport reasons. Who has told it would cost a hundred and fifty quid if businesses wanted to pay it. But this is obviously, if this was going to happen, it's going to save the business some money. And obviously, you know, it benefits them as well. And also the one on the front, the, the Doggy Road there, creating another space for people to park and shop in. So that's a good thing, yeah.
I can move that one.
Yeah.
I just learned by the thought, the two banks, that they're not allowed out of here. One of the problems is that, 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 it's absolutely impossible to get out of there because of the side of the engine. And it's really dangerous, so to me, I'm absolutely sensible for safety.
Comment, say the wrong, so all of those, we're happy with.
Okay, any other comments on that one? Fine. Yeah, next one, then, Cyril Avenue, and Warren Avenue.
Oh, Warren Avenue, just got to have.
Well, Warren Avenue, yeah. Okay, let's go back then, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, I would say to Dr. Ham, the only thing I'm disappointed with is that they're leaving that existing one hour parking bay. I would like to have seen the other line both sides.
You can, you can see that, if you think it's, one problem is
Because the problem is where they're coming, that one hour, what is there, we're not for about two calls at a moment.
You get free in there for the bank, most people calling there, it is
The bank won't tell them that.
But not for, that's not for
Yes, but I would like to have seen it both sides, other than that, I've got no problems with.
Do we have any other comments about that? Personally, I think the one hour parking there for people to come and go
On one side only.
On one side only, it is Can we, can we Is there a legal car, right?
So we believe the car, the parking there on the side of the bank, you take the one out, right? But if you have to the opposite way, you, before.
Yeah, so we agree? This is helpful, Dave?
And there's additional parking, allegedly to do.
Can I say we love
Yeah, it's a good change.
Good, any other comments on this particular page? Good, sorry, okay, let's move on then. We're in contention for a long time, Brook Hill Street. Yeah, and again, it comes back to what the town clerk said, you know, most houses, having lived, live in this area, most houses have two cars and the houses are, you know, they're one, but one car, it's basically
I mean, he's not trying to solve the parking problem. All he's doing is asking for safety, so that people aren't parking on the corner of Street, Don't Street. And to me, there's no objection though, because people parking on those edges is stupid. So, probably he's not solving the parking problem, he ain't going to solve the parking problem. But what they're, what they're, it's just sensible for safety.
I think you could make that point, that generally we feel that they're not actually resolving the parking problems. They're based on the town, that it's safety measures and for some sensible
And it's sensible in that one.
That many of these are appropriate. But I think the first sentence has to say that if the town council is disappointed that this goes nowhere, basically, to, to resolving the parking issues that are placed. Because, you know, as you said, some of the stuff, we've got houses that were built many, many years ago, and then, you know
And I think, so, it's some of the safety, personally, again, as I say, I try to look at this road on a regular basis. Some of the safety measures can go as far, you know, Balfour Street, because there's cars parked at either end, you could pull out in the middle of the road to get round. So, so the ones that are coming up the hill, like Balfour, the lines aren't, need to be extended to give you a better, better view of you. But again, that's, again, my personal, personal
Well, also, it's the chicane that you've got in the road as well, that doesn't help. You know, because even, even the refuge jobs, we've gotten down there, it's one of the jobs. maneuver.
Okay, so
Especially if you're taking a morning, and then before you put to school.
Okay, then, so in, in general, we, I think we're in agreement that the, the safety measures that they have are welcomed, but it, it doesn't solve the, the parking problem, and I think that, you can, you found it solved.
No, but I think we need to say that, because actually, they are supposed to be experts in their new. And when you look at what they've done, you know, if they've gone to university, about five vacations, and they've done that, then
Exactly, I did take that to him, I did take that following to him.
Yeah, I know nothing about car racing, engine, anything like that. I didn't do that, I don't do
Okay, then, let's bring back, please, and again, again, the personal comment for, for the residents on Balfour Street, the, the safety margin at the top of Balfour Street, because you're coming up the hill into the traffic, isn't it? So are there any, are there any other comments?
Well, there's, there's a wall, a bit of, and the street, there's a wall across the, you know, really tough to take down.
I mean, it was, it was built like that, it was the, the, the And for the parking there for the Okay, then, and coming back then, let's come, Cliff Hill Avenue.
I actually got petition on the ground in the year two, I'm sure I can get increased, so it's going in next Thursday. Now, I actually have a bit of a problem with this, because I personally think that the proposal is a sensible one. And the residents, oh, sorry, residents of Windsor Street are concerned, because they think it's just going to push the parking problem further up. And perhaps they, they're probably right. One of the problems there is that we've got people from the care centre, a lot of the staff in the care centre, rather than paying the pound, are parking on Windsor Street. And I've got, and I know someone else has got, and I've taken photographs and registered the number of cars in the car park and the number of cars on Windsor Street, and got different times, and it's perfectly obvious. I've been to talk to the managers at the care centre about this. I tried to work with them, and there's been some small improvement, but that's the situation. I, I do think that this has got to happen. I'm concerned that once again, I mean, one of the issues that I would say, people say they come home from work and they knock on glass on their house. However, I would argue, put it to them, that they have got free use of the Cliff Hill car park, basically, five o'clock onwards. Because you don't need to pay, well, you can put in, have free, have free hours from five till six, beyond six, and up until nine in the morning, you wouldn't need to pay. So they could make use of that space overnight if they so wish.
Yes, during the day, isn't it?
But they're talking about coming home from work and not making a car, that was the argument. But if you work for a casual shift and all that still
So, thanks for that, Dave. Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's water than, than you were imagining. I totally agree with the section that was about in the street. Cliff Hill Avenue is a different kettle of fish. Now, when the committee stood in the middle of the road, not so long ago, with me, I tried to get it knocked down, but it wouldn't happen. It's a total back run off from Nottingham Road. They come up at thirty, forty miles an hour of that snow. The general public walked in on the left hand side only. The cars come round from either up Nottingham Road or down on them, so, well, I'm surprised, you know, I'm not capped, because I've been living in that house already. It's a dangerous road, what's actually on that plan has been scrapped. It's all got to be rethought of again.
It's a very, it's just come through.
Yes, I know, but they've got to redo it. They're, they're not happy with, they're not happy about the whole situation of it. And I'm talking about, I'm not talking about Windsor Street, I'm talking about Cliff Hill Avenue itself. It's totally dangerous, their idea was to put white lines there, ones yellow lines there, one side on the right, they're not going to manage that. Because the only thing is that it's a very dangerous road, has been for years. And it is a back road, and it's going to be stopped.
I'm excited.
Anyway.
But I'll come back with this, if I
Well, they, the councillors and the committee said to me, well, we have to rethink this one, this is, this is
Mr. Chairman, this is what I have, this is all I can work with, and this is a problem. You're commenting stuff that is going to change received again.
Okay, so I think in summary of that, obviously, councillor Williams is pushing that through, the pushing, and has a position to go into county. Councillor Brindell, he says it's likely to be amended shortly, or do we have a timeframe on that?
No, no.
So do we have any other comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, then, the last one that we have, pinfold lanes in the middle of the road. What did I say?
That's what I made before anyway, I will make it all again. Bits on the road here, the pinpoint, I've got no problem. I've got no problems with the basic ideas, the lines are probably fine. The main problem is residents on Low Orchard Street and Middle Orchard Street always have continual problems with parking. And again, from the health centre, cars have been photographed there parked all day from the health centre. In doing what they're doing, I've got no problem with it, but it's going to congest the rest of it. The other problem is the people who live houses from two to twenty-six, most of those do not have any off street parking. They experience severe problems as it is parking anywhere near their house. And that's going to make it even more worse. I would suggest, and I want to do it for the residents in those houses, they would be quite happy with the residents parking thing near their houses. As an improvement, they've got no complaints about the
What, on the other side of the road?
No, on their side. No complaints about the rest on the other side. It's a problem of that intersection, that it's also a problem that what is going to happen on Orchard Street, and both Middle Orchard and Low Orchard Street, it's horrendous. Because equally, where I live on Jerk Street, people around there have got no parking guidelines, they park on Orchard Street. So I think it is, we should stress that whilst we've got no great complaints about what they're doing, it needs to be looked at the whole area as a whole and considered as that. Not just as the one bit which, to my impression, is, it's a gut reaction because the fire station's had problems. And it's a gut reaction they've done to stop that. And it hasn't been considered the whole of that area, and it needs considered the whole of that area. Not just suddenly in there, tell the fires. But no problems we've got want to do, I think, it just needs to be better than the Canada Street.
My, I'll give the big heart to you, to make a decent
Thank very much for your contribution.
And I'm telling you that it was in response to my follow-up email about Orchard Street. Where I handed in petitions on like, some ways where there's good parking. That's when I got the response that these schemes were likely to happen in the short term because of this, for the same, you know, budget. So, you know, I was thinking that we might some ways towards that scheme being put in place, and that's the response.
Thank you very much.
Yes, councillor Williams is quite right. I noted for a very quiet office, and I know we've communicated with the county about this particular problem, Orchard Street and Middle Orchard Street. Yes, it would be sensible, as councillor Hayes has already said, which, which would badly send emails and such forth off to the county about. When it first came up about fire, the game could not get out of the fire station, then that is something happening twelve months ago. One, that was reported twice in one, in one session. The county decided that it was priority, county actually sent a letter, and councillor Williams wrote one as well, saying these lines will be introduced by March of two thousand and fifteen. Now, it's the last of two, five, March two thousand and fifteen, I've got no idea. But what I'm saying to you is, they should do the whole street in one piece, the rainfall rain, but they're not going to do it. There's no money for it. So it's possible, you might get rainfall rain done full stop, you might do it, but you won't get anything else.
Okay, thank you, David.
I've just, I've just told you, we, we, thank you, Alison, about, about the, the Orchard Streets, it's so congested on the
Alright, thank you very much, do we have any other comments?
One further comment, could they try to, with all their expertise, could they please try to take a comprehensive view of the implications for the town and its residents? And would they kindly communicate with us in terms of, because I actually asked them to send me through an update on where, you know, I was asking for some sort of spreadsheet, because I lose track, because things go through, and you know, there's that and the other. So I asked them to come back to me, but of course you've got different people doing it in different areas as well. So, you know, well, I told you this one, but I don't deal with that one. Why? Why don't you have one overall, overarching, that's the one, an overarching view, traffic and transport group? Did you have a meeting, was it yesterday?
Thanks, we can, we can
Or perhaps again, you can raise
We will, we will do that.
Mr. Chairman, it's very difficult, a, a fairing area where you have a lot of overfensies, there's a lot of street parking, that means but you have no right to park in front of your home, and that's something people don't quite realise, that's true. Yeah, you, no, but it's open to everyone. So if you have an area without government in line, without care with the grid, there's parking, you will comfortably park in there.
If they're supposed to be experts in that field, they should know what they're doing, and not, that's stupid ideas.
Yeah, that's a, for a generation.
Residents, which is a lot of We're going to start, okay.
Yeah, if you remember
Residents parking, residents parking, you still not, can I park outside your house? If anybody else is looking for it, and they wish to park there, if you don't, if you're not there first for it, and they wish to park there, if you don't, and if you're not there first, you can't walk there.
Yeah, parking there. So if you, I'm sure we all remember when we had the review of this initially, and this building was also there, started to be, employed a lot of people coming to see all the plans. Um, we had, the other week, I had, yeah, I had consultants, you know, the tools, but the consultants were doing the work, were inspired by what's happened, wasn't it, explain mental staff that were bringing it, it was a private consultancy.
I think that's kind of council staff that quite best able to do this, yeah.
All right, okay, um, in, in principle then, on the pinfold and middle lane, we're happy. In principle, with the, with the, um, with the suggestions that they've made, however, there's, um, I think a general consensus that, um, they need to consult with more and take the whole look of the area.
I bet they, they, they consulted the other.
Yeah, um, and, I mean, councillor Williams, yes, and, and, but in view of what councillor Williams has already said, it's going to be a forty-four percent reduction, um, some of these things just aren't going to happen. I think that's the reality of it, but it won't stop us making our, our comments to them, and absolutely considering.
I was, the chairman, they were going as one comment on everything, and this is how you feel, and what others, I'll ask them to reply in detail.
Yes.
Yes.
Which you can run by that as.
Excellent, good, all right then, um, so that's a, an action for the town park. It's all right to the county council on all the various recommendations that we've made, and ask them to address each point, um, following the map that they pushed out. Do we have any other comments on the, the, uh, parking, by the way, mate? Okay, fine, and then, okay then, let's move on, um, item nine, plans considered by the leader and the Chair of Planning, document one attached to your agenda.
Yes, Mrs. Chairman, President Pearce needs, um, a comment to, he would like to see, um, these, um, like plans considered by the leader, and also they decide to come out to them. So what I'm proposing to do is.
One more later, maybe.
Yeah, more later, yeah, because it's only people that have planning. So what I'm proposing to do is, we can let you have, I think, that I'll send about twelve, ten papers for the people who are, who do that, but my email, I'm not going to have a copy.
Then, then people.
And then, I, I won't bring the names, the committee, I'm just sitting here, yeah, people have to do that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then, so action for the park, we'll send out the, the Chair's actions, um, call me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for that, moving on then, Procter, Murray, council planning decisions. Again, document two, attached to your. Okay, um, that proves the conclusion, obviously, the date of the next meeting may be on the twenty of March, but we'll be communicating to everybody in due course. Okay, um, but just for your, obviously, that's the close of the meeting, but just for your information, there is a late application that's coming about Whitey Mill, that we spoke about, and next week, um.
Yeah, but to the length of, I've got a baby circle and a hard pocket to you all. Um, I only picked it up this afternoon by the clock, in order for it to be able to take place, rather than calling other spaces.
Okay, thank you very much, have a good evening, and I'll see you, see you later.